Here.
Aldrian Casey.
Here.
Is there a form? Is there a form? Thank you to the Palis Heights Women's Club for promoting and sponsoring tonight's Mayor for a Day program, and to the City Council members for their support and guidance in this valuable learning experience. Are there any questions or changes to the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Zone moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rock on. Aldrian Klinger?
Yes.
Yes. Aldrian Mirandaiz? Aldrian Zinkes?
Yes.
Aldrian Syrian?
Yes.
Aldrian Gomez? Aldrian Walsh?
Yes.
Aldrian Casey?
Yes.
Approval of the Mayor for a Day meeting stated on April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. Approval of payroll and voucher list for the period ending October eleventh, twenty nineteen. Approval of a request to conduct a bike-a-thon on the Cal Sag Trail in the city of Palis Heights on Saturday, October nineteenth, twenty nineteen. I move to approve a proclamation for the Mayor for a Day, October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Call to... Uh, Aldrian Klinger?
Yes.
Aldrian Mirandaiz? Aldrian Jensen? Aldrian Zinkes?
Yes.
Aldrian Syrian?
Yes.
Aldrian Gomez? Aldrian Walsh?
Yes.
Aldrian Casey?
Yes.
The Mayor for a Day program has become a tradition in Palis Heights, one that has been a benefit to both the city and the students who have participated in the program over the past forty-two years. Now therefore I, Mayor Braden Moore, as the City Council of the City of Palis Heights, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, as Mayor for a Day, and further recognize that our community has faith in the ability of today's youth as they assume roles which will shape the future of our community. Over the past couple of years, the city has been acquired many grants to help fund the installation of sidewalks along the main through fairs throughout town. This has been done to provide safe walking in these areas for residents and visitors to access businesses, medical offices, restaurants, and other attractions. Please use the sidewalks that have been provided for your city. I would like to remind all residents to shop and dine in Palis Heights. Our local business owners depend on you and me to help them survive. Think twice before you shop online if you can buy it here in Palis Heights. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to give summary of the two thousand and eighteen Freedom of Information Report. The clerk's office received a total of two hundred and seventy-four Freedom of Information requests in two thousand and eighteen for records and/or documents from the following departments. Administration received fifty-three. Department of Police received one hundred and fifty-seven. Building slash zoning department received sixty-two. Public Works Department received two. All FOIA requests were responded to within the five-day limit with the exception of three requests, which required additional time, and thirty-seven requests which were commercialized purposes. I'd also like to report there were complaints with the posting requirements on the city's website for two thousand and nineteen. The city had five certificate FOIA officers, and the clerk and deputy clerk are certific- uh, certified for the Opening Meetings Act requirements. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The summary fund report for the month ending August thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen is as following. General fund ending balance is four million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Special funds ending balance is thirteen million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and forty cents. I am happy to report that the city has once again received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the GF.O.A. The GF.O.A. established a certificate for achievement for excellence in financial reporting program, C A F R program. In nineteen forty-five, to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports evidence, the sphere of transparency, and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. The program of the... The goal of the program is not to assess the financial health of participation governments, but to rather ensure that users of their financial statements have the information they need to do so themselves. The city has received this distinguished recognition for the past eleven years. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening unless I have a... We have no pending litigation.
Does anyone have any correspondence they want to read? Is anyone in the audience who would like to come forward to address the City Council? If so, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Finance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen annual budget in the total amount of twenty-six million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I move to approve renewing the city's health insurance coverage with United Healthcare at an increase of five point five percent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
This concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Public Safety?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Palis Heights Police Department would like to remind everyone that distracted driving includes texting, using a cell phone, grooming, reading, using a navigation system, watching a video, and adjusting a radio. Texting while driving is considered the most dangerous distraction, and young drivers ages sixteen to twenty-four do so more than older drivers. Drivers younger and old need to be educated about the dangers of distracted driving. Please remember distracted driving causes accidents and can kill. I move to approve increasing the fees off a traffic fine for distracted driving from between fifty and two hundred and fifty dollars to between two hundred and five hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rock on. Aldrian Klinger?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Say yes.
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 Aldrian Mirandaiz? Aldrian Jensen? Aldrian Zinkes?
Yes.
Aldrian Syrian?
Yes.
Aldrian Gomez?
Yes.
Aldrian Walsh?
Yes.
Aldrian Casey?
Yes.
I would also like to remind everyone to lock it or lose it. Always lock your car doors and close all windows to prevent theft from your vehicle. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Municipal Grounds and Property?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Waste pickup will continue with the same scheduling used last year. If you need a reminder for the recycling schedule, magnetic calendars are available at City Hall. If you are a senior citizen and have not received your billing discount, you may also pick up an application at City Hall or download one from our website. Scheduling also remains the same as last year for the chipper service. Remember to place limbs... To place cut limbs no larger than four inches in diameter and branches curbside with cut ends pointing towards the road. Please limit piles to four feet by eight feet per week. Chipper service ends the week of October twenty-eighth. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Planning and zoning?
I'll take this report, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the City Attorney to draft an ordinance for zoning variance to allow a licensed reindeer daycare center as a special use in a B-zone building located at one hundred and twenty-fifth West, one hundred and twenty-seventh Street. Petition filed by Mr. Chris Kringle. I second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rock on. Aldrian Klinger?
Yes.
Aldrian Mirandaiz? Aldrian Jensen? Aldrian Zinkes?
Yes.
Aldrian Syrian?
Yes.
Aldrian Gomez?
Yes.
Aldrian Walsh?
Yes.
Aldrian Casey?
Yes.
This concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. October is a very busy month here in Palis Heights. Tomorrow, October sixteenth, is the last farmer's market for the season. Please take advantage of this final opportunity to visit the market. As always, the market is held at the municipal parking lot from seven AM to one PM. I would like to thank the Parks and Recreation Department and all the volunteers that made this markets... This year's market a success. There'll be two fall farmer markets held in the Orchard Room at the Palis Heights Recreation Center on November sixteenth and December twenty-first. All children ages two through ten are invited to year... To this year's pumpkin decorating event held from six to seven PM in the Orchard Room this Thursday, October seventeenth. Bring your own pumpkin and we will supply the decorations. Our big Halloween event, Touchy Truck and Treat, will be on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, from five to eight, in the Palis Heights Pool Parking Lot. Come and enjoy a hands-on experience with police and fire department vehicles, construction equipment, and lots of candy, too. Lastly, Lake Catherine is hosting a hayride and campfire on October twenty-fifth. Cost of the event is ten dollars and requires registration. Besides the hayride, there will be fall crafts, food, music, and many smiles. Please contact the nature center to reserve your spot. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Roads and Construction?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve authorizing the Director of Public Works to have the city engineer prepare specifications and go out to bid for the two thousand and twenty roads program as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rock on. Aldrian Klinger?
Yes.
Aldrian Mirandaiz? Aldrian Jensen? Aldrian Zinkes?
Yes.
Aldrian Syrian?
Yes.
Aldrian Gomez?
Yes.
Aldrian Walsh?
Yes.
Aldrian Casey?
Yes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
License, permits, and franchise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to motion to authorize City Administrator to direct city staff to have specifications prepared and go out for bid for a skate park park... Skateboard park at Palis Heights.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm second.
Rock on. Aldrian Klinger?
Yes.
Aldrian Mirandaiz?
Yes.
Aldrian Jensen? Aldrian Zinkes?
Yes.
Aldrian Syrian?
Yes.
Aldrian Gomez?
Yes.
Aldrian Walsh?
Yes.
Aldrian Casey?
Yes.
I would like to motion to authorize the City Administrator to direct city staff to prepare specifications and go out for bid for the construction of an outdoor hockey rink in Palis Heights.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Rock on. Aldrian Klinger?
Here.
Aldrian Mirandaiz?
Here.
Aldrian Jensen? Aldrian Zinkes?
Here.
Aldrian Syrian?
Here.
Aldrian Gomez?
Here.
Aldrian Walsh?
Here.
Aldrian Casey?
Here.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Water and Sewer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to authorize the Director of Public Works to begin the inspection and cleanup of accumulated debris in Navajo Creek, which might be obstructing the flow of rainwater to the Cal Sag Channel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rock on. Aldrian Klinger?
Yes.
Aldrian Mirandaiz?
Yes.
Aldrian Jensen? Aldrian Zinkes?
Yes.
Aldrian Syrian?
Yes.
Aldrian Gomez?
Yes.
Aldrian Walsh?
Yes.
Aldrian Casey?
Yes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Business and Economic Development?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Even though we are weeks away, please mark your calendar on December sixth and seventh for this year's Chris Kringle Market. The market will be open from five to nine on the sixth and from one to seven on the seventh. Last year, we had over three thousand visitors, so we are expecting greater numbers this year. We are very excited about this event. We will again have over seventy-five vendors at the market. Of course, Santa will once again visit both days, and a kid's corner will thrill your youngsters with crafts and letter writing to Santa. This year's market also features a food tent with five restaurants providing tasty treats for your entire family. Dine and shop with us. An ice sculptor and a high school course will add to the opening activities. Most importantly, a trolley would provide rides for you and your family to and from remote parking spots. Palis Heights and the Business Economic Advisory Committee are well aware of how small business add to a community life. We will like you to consider shopping local to this coming holiday season. The only way to our business prosper is if we use them. So remember, shop local and dine local. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Ad hoc cable TV?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Comcast has requested to continue using Channel Four Palis Heights as a model cable access TV station for other towns in the southwest region to visit and tour our studio facilities and operational systems currently in place. Most towns are interested in operating from a bulletin board to a taped video program to provide improved transparency along with installing equipment for capacity to support their plan. Today, the following manifestation facilities have visited the Channel Four's facilities in two thousand and eighteen and received a tour presentation from Ron Jawinski. Village of University Park, City of Oak Forest, Village of Madison, Village of Riverdale, Village of Chicago Ridge. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any old businesses?
Say yes.
Yes. New businesses? I would like to thank everyone for this event.
Is there any new businesses? Does anyone wish to ask questions in regards to tonight's meeting? If so, ask that person to come forward and state their name and... Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Zone moved.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for watching. Appreciate it. Well, meeting order. Oh, please rise. I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take your role.
Alderman Vasso?
Here.
Alderman Violet?
Here.
Alderman Clifford?
Here.
Alderman Key?
Here.
Alderman Kromarski?
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Here.
Alderman McGrogan?
Here.
Alderman McGovern?
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Trojan, Attorney, and all present.
All right, thank you. Before this meeting tonight, we had Mayor for a Day, which is the fortieth year, I think. Forty-something year...
Forty-two.
Forty-two years that we've done this, where we have individual junior high students, eighth graders from one twenty-eight, one eighteen, and St. Els participate and do an essay as far as being Mayor for a Day, what it would mean to them, and how they would change the town, and what they like about the town. I think one thing that came out, as I mentioned over at Lake Catherine, where we had this earlier, little pizza party before we came over here, was the fact that I... What came out with the students was their actual love for the city, and, you know, what they see positive about the city, and some changes. And there are some changes that we can make, can be made, and we'll take that into consideration. You know, there's some that come up every year for the last twenty years that I've been doing this, but, well, this is, you know, some things can't be done, some can. So we'll see what we can do and work from there. But it was all very positive. Gives the students a way to get involved in government, and who knows what happens from there? I mean, both my kids were Mayor for a Day back many, many, many years ago, and, you know, they've done okay. So, but right now, I'd like to give certificates to the individuals. If they would please come up as I read your name, and I will do that. Let me get a mic here so I can... Okay, the Mayor for a Day was Braden Moore. Great job. I apologize ahead of time if I misfilled or mispronounced the name. The City Attorney was Teagan Stein. And the City Clerk, Elizabeth Stepuski. Now we go into the... City Treasurer, Kayla Hedger. We'll be in real trouble if you don't, so it doesn't... The Alderman for the third ward was Hannah Gomez. Another Alderman for Ward One is Margaret Klinger. Alderman Ward Two is Olivia Cissler. Ward Four Alderman is Tessa Welsh. Ward One Alderman, Mitchell Maderas. Sure, thank you, guys, all of you. Ward Three, Jack Syrian. Ward Four Alderman, Tyler Casey. All right, this is going to prop me out of those pictures, anyway, that's... And the Ward Two Alderman, who's not here, is Eli Jensen, so... Again, thank you to everybody, thank you to the parents, too, for coming out and, you know, raising great kids. This is really what it's all about, and thank you.
Thanks. Great job.
All right, under a consent calendar, we've got two items. The approval of a City Council meeting from October first, two thousand and nineteen. The approval of payroll and voucher list for the period ending October eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Zone moved.
Second.
On... Rock on?
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski?
Yes.
Alderman Vasso?
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, let's see, we've got no sealed bids. Under my report, again, just we had a great time over at City at Lake Catherine earlier. I want to thank the Women's Club for, again, forty-two years of doing this, and it's been great. And Mary Ann Ohr, the chairman, has spearheaded that for that many years, and she can recollect it to us why... How this all started back in her pool forty-two years ago, after a couple cocktails, but we won't get into that. Jim, can I have that presentation? Also, I'd like to make a brief proclamation for Mayor for a Day. Whereas the Mayor for a Day Essay Contest was established by the Palis Heights Women's Club in nineteen seventy-seven, whereas the purpose of the contest is to hear from the youth of our community what improvements they feel to make in Palis Heights, make Palis Heights a better place to live. And whereas there are basically four rules to the contest. You must be a resident of Palis Heights. You must be an eighth grade student. Write a two-hundred to three-hundred word essay, and include four ideas of what you would see implemented for the city's improvement. And whereas the youth of our city are a valuable resource, and whereas important for the youth of Palis Heights to learn and understand the role of local government. And whereas the Mayor for a Day program has become a tradition in Palis Heights, one that has benefited both the city and the students who have participated in the program for over forty-two years. Now therefore I, Robert Strauss, and the City Council of Palis Heights do proclaim October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as Mayor for a Day, and further recognize the community that has faith and ability in today's youth as they assume the roles that will shape the future of our community. This day under my signature. With that, a move for approval of a proclamation?
Zone moved.
Moved by Alderman Violet?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you for everything. City Treasurer... Sorry, City Clerk? City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Present the Treasurer's report for the period ending September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. General Fund started the month with four million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Revenues of six hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Expenses totaling seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-three cents. Other source use, three thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-four cents. Giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of four million, six hundred thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Total of all funds started the month with eighteen million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and seventeen cents. Revenue of one million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. Expenses totaling one million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-one cents. Other source use, sixty-eight thousand, sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. Giving a total in all funds, ending balance of eighteen million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Look for motion to approve the Treasurer's report?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clifford is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I hate to repeat, but as stated earlier by the Attorney for a Day, there is no report.
Are any communications, anyone have? All right, citizens wishing to address the council? Name and address, Marianne.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Orr. I live at one-twenty-seven, eighteen, South Sixty-Ninth Court in Palisades. It's in Old Westgate. I just want to thank, first of all, thank you for having this, supporting my mayor for a day. Now, I would like to address the council about sidewalks. For forty-two years, we've been doing this, and every year, even the mayor's children probably asked for sidewalks. And I've lived here fifty-two years, and I have never been asked my opinion on whether we should have sidewalks. I'm asking you, as the city council, have you looked into this?
Well, I guess, one of the problems, first of all, in the old section of town is the surface water drainage system we have. We'd have to put in all new sewers and water, you wouldn't just be putting sidewalks in. And the cost would be, have to be bore by each individual homeowner for that, and also the sidewalks in front of their house. So, it would be somewhat cost prohibitive, shall we say, at this time.
I wondered that, but I've asked a lot of my friends and people who've lived here, and every single woman on that committee for mayor for a day said they would vote yes for sidewalks. We have eight million or something in our treasury.
But that's not for, that.
That's not true?
Well, it's individual funds, not just, we just can't spend that for anything we want. I mean, if they're.
Okay, I just feel like they have asked for this for forty-two years. Forty-four out of sixty-one essays asked for sidewalks, as you know. They've been asking it for years.
Well, and.
I would like you, city council, to act upon it, or to look into it.
Well, we can look into it, and I have no problem looking into it. You know, one of the things we have done over the last number of years, last ten years or so, is that we've made a concerted effort to put sidewalks down in the major thoroughfares.
Okay, would you please add sidewalks to one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh Street?
There are.
I happen to pull out there. No, there are not sidewalks all the way. And the rec center is there now. There is no traffic light, there is nothing between Harlem and Ridgeland. And one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh Street is very, very busy.
Well, first of all, that's a state highway, we can't just put a traffic light there.
Okay.
And then also, the right of ways on this, both sides of Harlem Avenue, both sides of one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh Street are straight, are state right of ways. We don't have jurisdiction to do that. So, you know, where we could, we do have sidewalks on one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh Street.
Here and there?
Pretty much there.
Well, not near me. Anyway.
I think the sidewalk on one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh is, is pretty much continuous on at least one side of the street.
Exactly.
But there's a lot of kids that walk, adults, too.
Sure.
Walk on people's, you know, along the ditch.
And I've mentioned this more than once, and people contest to it, the fact that we have sidewalks on the north side of the street, and people continue to walk in the street on the south side of the street.
Okay, my next complaint, and I love Palisades, I've lived here forever, and my next question is about a dog park. Why have, has that ever been brought up?
Yes.
Have you ever brought that up?
Actually, we've accumulated, we've, we've just acquired some property near the park and the rec center, and there's some, one of the ideas may be a dog park there. We're looking into that.
Very good. Also, you mentioned today at the meeting about Dominics in Frankfurt. How were they able to put a movie theater in their Dominics?
Well, they didn't put the movie theater, some individual who wanted to do it has, you've got to find an individual company who's willing to do that and cut a deal with the owner of the lease, which would be Jewel.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Individual towns do not put the businesses in the.
I just feel like these kids have worked so hard to give their suggestions, and they go nowhere.
No, we've, we've.
You know, so I'm glad to hear that.
Great, thanks, Marianne, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and just a note on, ma'am, so now, years ago, if you remember Frank Passarelli, your alderman, who was in Ward two. Years ago, he did a study, or went out and looked at the feasibility of installing sidewalks, and not only that, but streetlights. The response that came back to most of the people in the old town section, they didn't really care to have that, and that it was so cost prohibitive to do it with the culvert system that was in the, in the old town section, it just wouldn't work out. Where the city is putting in sidewalks, as Alderman Violet says, along one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh where needed, on all new developments, along Harlem, eighty-three, and here, it's a continuation of that on Ridgeland, on Harlem Avenue. There's been new sidewalks added around town and everything in there, so they are doing something about it. But the cost, as the mayor said, to do that in an old town section would be just astronomical and a logistical nightmare to try to put in sidewalks in the old town section.
I know, but I have never seen, nobody's ever asked me, as a resident for fifty-two years.
They're probably unaware of it, they ask you.
You know, nobody, nobody has ever asked, I've never seen it on a ballot or anything about sidewalks.
There was never, no need to do it, but we do look into them as they come up, and we are doing those.
And I certainly hope you'll finish one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh.
And do the best we can.
Yeah, and put more sidewalk, have that, all sidewalks.
Okay, great, thank you, Marianne.
And I love Palisades, too.
Thanks.
Palisades loves you.
Any other citizens? Finance committee?
Mr. Mayor, on number ten on the agenda, we have a motion to approve a fund balance transfer in the amount of six hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and that's going to go from the general fund to the capital improvement fund in order for us, for the city, to continue financing twenty-twenty capital improvement projects.
Moved by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Violet, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next one is number eleven, similar transfer, of, of fund balance transfer in the amount of seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars from the water and sewer fund to the water and sewer capital projects fund in order to help finance improvements during twenty-twenty.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Violet, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's the end of my report.
Public safety, Alderman McGovern?
No reports this month.
Municipal grounds of property, Alderman Vasso?
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda, but I'd just like to remind everyone that the end of the month, we'll end our chipper service, as well as our yard waste pickup, so, end of the month coincidentally falls on a Thursday, and that would be the end of the pickups, so, plan to work hard this week and next to get all that stuff done. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning zoning, Alderman Clifford?
I have no report at this time, but the looks going, and the members of my planning zoning committee, I won't be able to attend. I'll be out of town that weekend, and Alderman McGovern's going to now chair.
Thank you, sir. Recreation, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance authorizing the sale of a two-thousand-and-seven Chevrolet Impala utilized by the recreation department to Currie Motors Commercial Center in the amount of eighteen hundred hours.
Moved by Alderman Keys, her second. Second by Alderman McGovern, discussion, roll call? To draft the ordinance? Is it draft, oh, I'm sorry, is this draft ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, I apologize.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules on that, and so that we can adopt, because, um, the next one, for us to get that new vehicle at a certain price and a certain trade-in, we need to move.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then can I make the motion to?
Adopt it?
Adopt.
Second by Alderman Violet, I assume?
Yes.
Roll call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the, for the recreation department through the suburban purchasing cooperative from Currie Motors Commercial Center in the amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, minus the trade-in of eighteen hundred hours, for a final cost of twenty, whoops.
Twenty-one thousand.
Okay, thank you. Of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Moved by Alderman Violet, moved by Alderman McGovern, Alderman Violet, roll call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve a change order from Country Landscape and Supply for the pool deck concrete project in an amount not to exceed ten thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-two cents.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, any discussion, roll call?
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes. And then I'd like to make a motion to approve a payment to Upland Design in the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents for work completed on the Palmer Park project.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, any discussion, roll call?
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern. Alderman, Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
And then tomorrow is the last farmer's market, and I'd just like to say thank you to the recreation department staff, and there's many volunteers that help out each week. Thank you for their efforts in making this year's farmer's market a success. And then I'd like to point out that on the twenty-fourth of this month is a touch, a truck and treat event for kids. It's in the pool parking lot, there'll be police vehicles, fire department vehicles, construction vehicles, lots of candy. It's from five to eight. And then on November seventh, the recreation department in the orchard room is having a Veterans Day breakfast. This is maybe the third or fourth year that we've had that in a row. It's from nine o'clock to ten-thirty, and if you're a veteran, it's free for you and a guest, and just call the recreation center and reserve your spot. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Key. Rules of construction, Alderman Kromarski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to adopt an ordinance updating chapter one-five-one of the city code floodplain development requirements.
Moved by Alderman Kromarski, second by Alderman, I'm sorry, Clifford, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Move to approve the use of economy disposal services for the demolition at one-thirty, forty, South Cypress Lane in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
Moved by Alderman Kromarski, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Key, discussion?
This is part of that project on the floodplain control, right?
Right.
And this is the city's portion of it?
Well, no, that's, this was, that's going in the closing, we, this is not.
It'll be picked up by.
Seller, seller picked it up.
Pardon?
The seller picked it up.
Seller, all right.
Discussion, roll call?
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank Attorney Brown for all the effort he put forth in the updating of that ordinance. It was a lengthy amount of work, so thank you. And with that, it's the end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman. License permits and franchise, Alderman Lewandowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve a request from Lindsey Nissen and Ellen B. Shepherd High School to allow the placement of signs at various locations around the city to advertise their fall and spring craft shows held on December first, two thousand nineteen, and March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty.
Moved by Alderman Lewandowski, is her second? Second by Alderman Clifford, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Alderman Violet?
No report this month, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, key, how about business and economic development?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to encourage all of our residents that as we enter the holiday season here, and it's, it's going to be Christmas shopping time very soon, and, you know, I'm encouraging everyone to shop local and dine local. Usually when I'm out shopping with my wife, we're also eating at restaurants and stuff, and, but, you know, no one likes the empty stores in town, but the fact of the matter is, the reason that they're empty is because we're doing way too much shopping online instead of walking into our small businesses. And I want to tell you, from the Business Economic Advisory Committee, we do a lot of work with the small business owners, and they contribute in a great way to our community. And so, this, this is the time where we can help them out, and this is a, for some small businesses, much of their profits for the whole year comes at Christmas time, so shop local and dine local. And then also, just something to consider, Lake Catherine, one of the things that they, they do as, as part of their fundraising is they have dedications of trees, you can have a tree planted, or a certain tree dedicated, or benches throughout the property that are also dedicated, and maybe you'd like to consider as a family dedicating it to maybe a family member that has passed, or, or someone you want to celebrate, and so consider doing that, and contact Lake Catherine at any time to set that up. And then our, a, a big thing that the economic development is, is involved in is our Kris Kringle Market, which is on December sixth and seventh. And this year, something that we're having new is we're having a food tent with five vendors, five different kinds of foods are being sold at, so not only can you shop at the seventy-five vendors, but you can have dinner with your family there. And we're also having a trolley going up and down Harlem, going to take families to remote parking. And because with over three thousand guests at the market, plus the seventy-five vendors, you can imagine there's quite a lot of people coming to the downtown area, and so we're going to have a, a transportation system set up so that we can drive you to your car. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
And have cable, Alderman McGovern?
No report, Mayor.
Any old business? Any citizens wishing to ask questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment I'd like to make if I possibly could, I was, my, here. This is something that just happened over the weekend. One of the residents received a, or many, many residents received an email from another resident here in Oak Hills that asked for her to send, said she was on vacation, and they wanted her to send one hundred to two hundred dollars in a gift card, and then followed up by sending a copy of the gift card barcode out. And that, if a practice happens like that to you, please remember, the most important thing you can do once everybody starts calling you and asking you about it, is change your password instantly. Please change your password, that's the only way you can block it. This happened. There were about twenty-five people that received the same, same email, asking for two hundred dollars. And funny thing about it was, her office was closed on Saturday and Sunday, and that's when they did it, so.
Great, thank you. Be cautious, will you please, especially around the holidays?
I know, I called, referred a number over to the police department. It's that time of the year, the holidays are approaching, and everybody, like you, like they have more than you have, and look at various means to secure that, and one of them is phone scams, is Alderman McGovern. Latest one is a police one that's going around soliciting funds. Our police department, the fire department is not solicit over the phone, so just hang that, hang that up, and be aware of what's going on out there, because they, they'll try to get everything out of you, and, uh, just go back, and the other thing is, they're using your neighbor's numbers on these telemarketing calls, you think it's theirs. You pick up the phone, you're potentially doing it, it's not, they're just robo-calling, all of these things, run scams on the people around here. And just be, be aware of all of those things that are going on, because as Alderman McGovern said, in public safety, your cars, you're locking them at night. Don't take anything for granted, even when you're in the store, and I've seen this, where somebody will be shopping, they say, oh, I gotta get the tea in the other aisle, and I left their purse in the shopping cart, take it with you, happens all over. Just be, just be aware of this, however. A follow-up by you, Alderman Clifford? The National Federation of Police, any Illinois Federation of Police, do not solicit funds.
Mr. Mayor, I just thought this would be an interesting thing with the weather changing. The little varmints, the squirrels, raccoons, all sorts of little pests are starting to find better homes. Unfortunately, I had the, as well as some of my neighbors, one of them, he had a skunk, and they extract, they moved the skunk away from their house. Unfortunately, he found my house. And, so, I ended up, through some research from the first person who moved them on that stream, I got the name, and I contacted this Mark's Wildlife at Comcast dot net, and they did a great job, and he works with many of the municipalities, and actually, I was going to ask the mayor, he suggested, because he works with lots of, of the west suburban towns. of, of the west suburban towns, and the guy's so busy, it's almost like seeing a doctor. And, um, he said, you know, he'd love to get, you know, like, in front of residents, because normally, normally people might contact the police department, and that's not their line of work. And, um, and he actually asked for like a donation to cover his gas money. And, um, so the guy does a really nice service, and so I'm gonna try to make sure that, that website that I'm trying to do by memory is, uh, exact, but if we do get it, I would think maybe we could put it on the, uh, website.
Sure. Okay, get it in.
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to say thank you to Marianne and the, uh, Payless Heights Women's Club. I don't think you can go anywhere around town without seeing their presence.
Right.
Um, the things that they provided that make life better for all of us. But for tonight's, uh, participation by all the kids and stuff, I, I think they put a little extra effort into it, and I think it showed with the number of kids that participated, but also the quality of their writing was, uh, very good. And just, I want to say thank you to Lake Catherine for allowing us to have the dinner there, and I'd like to say thank you to your assistant, Margaret Keery, for doing a lot of the logistics for the city, and, uh, ordering the food, and cleaning up after us, and all that stuff, so thank you.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Citizens, gentlemen, gentlemen. Your name and address, sir.
Ray Fiori, one twenty-three sixty South Nagel. I want to thank the council for giving their time to hear what's on my mind. What I'm here to talk about is, uh, our house was the last new home built on the west side of one hundred and twenty-third Street in Nagel, and they vacated the street to build our home there. So, we're the last new one there. We've been there for, I think, almost eighteen years now. What I'm here to talk about is one hundred and twenty-fourth Street. Did anybody realize that between Ridgeland Avenue and Oak Park Avenue, one hundred and twenty-fourth Street is a whole total amount of three hundred feet? That's all there is on one hundred and twenty-fourth Street. All twenty, one hundred and twenty-fourth Street is used for, is for shortcuts. None of our neighbors use that street, rarely, once in a while they do, but you can't get out of one hundred and twenty-fourth Street to go north without crossing a median. You can't enter one hundred and twenty-fourth Street going to the north without crossing a median, or driving into an oncoming turning lane, which would be head-on. Uh, that street is really a dead street. They use it for shortcuts. When the traffic is heavy, uh, the car's going to the south, they turn on one hundred and twenty-fourth Street, zoom down Nagel Avenue to the south, and cut through Navajo to get to one hundred and twenty-seventh Street. In the morning, when the traffic is heavy, unless the vehicles are trucks or SUVs, they jump the median, they turn down one hundred and twenty-fourth Street, and they zoom down Nagel to the north, and then they turn at one hundred and twenty-third and zoom through the college to come out College Drive. Ridgeland Avenue has increased traffic quite a bit, and the sound is really, really loud. So, all the neighbors that I've talked to, all four of them that live adjacent to this street, they all agree with the same thing that I say. We should put a planter at the end of the curb there, and put some type of vegetation, trees, any type of trees, to help break down the sound of one hundred and twenty-fourth Street and to divert the traffic. Because really, Nagel Avenue is, well, we're trying to downsize, and we had our house on the market for a while, and every complaint we got is about the street, and that's because the parking is very limited. On the streets are very nagal, are, are very narrow.